Okay, at 7:05, we will call the meeting to order. Do we have any public hearings? Okay, not hearing anything, we will move on. To review of the agenda calendar, I don't necessarily have anything, does anybody, okay. So warrants.
Caitlin, do you happen to have the warrants in front of you? I apologize, but I just realized that the two that I signed last week are not here, which is what I was doing frantically looking around. My camera was off, but I believe they're downstairs. I can run and grab them if you don't want.
I do have them in front of me. But I don't know which one you left off on last meeting. So do you want to read the ones you have and I'll fill in the blanks? Or I can read them all. I might overlap a little bit with last month.
Okay, if you don't mind just going for it, that would be awesome. Thank you.
No problem. So for payroll warrants. Does anyone know the the meeting date last month?
March 21.
March 21.
Okay, so I had one on March 19th, so I'll skip that one. And for
I Caitlin, I see that there's one from the draft minutes last time. There's one for 319, 3021. And then there's one for 4224, 3022.
A payroll warrant from 42?
It is $24,608.
Okay, so that one was, I think, an accounts payable. So for the payroll, we have one from April 2nd for $87,044.35. Batch or it's of voucher number 320, 320. And the other payroll one I have is from 416, usually I don't go ahead from the present, but just that we have all of the information that we can kind of tease out if we need to to not include that one. Batch 321 or voucher number 321 from April 16th, 2024 for $86,274.39. Those are the two payroll warrants. For accounts payable warrants. Oh, yeah, I see 3022 for payroll. So we have 3023 from April 16th, 2024 for $19,367.72. And 3024 from April 30th for $61,852.10. But those two are also future dates. And I can send those numbers to Trevor also if it would be helpful.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any gifts or grants?
No.
Oh, gifts or grants?
That's just for you, Jen, just for you.
I won't hear it after next month. Wah wah.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from March 21st? If there are no changes or edits?
I approve, I moved to approve the minutes from March 21st.
All those in favor?
Martella?
Taylor, I.
Rose. Next on the agenda is just our review of any capital projects or building processes. Are there any updates from last meeting? Or is everything still status quo?
Everything is what it was. I do know that there's been people walking around to look at the siding and all of that fun stuff. And so the school's gonna look really nice for the start of next school year, which will be really awesome.
Nice.
Okay, new business. We have several items. The first item we had on here was the discussion of the Amherst School Committee debate on sixth graders moving to the middle school. And I believe at our last meeting, it was the request was made to kind of put your thoughts together that so that we could give them to Anna, so she could bring those to the next Amherst School Committee meeting. But Anna is not here. So does anybody have any any thoughts they want to add to put on record for Anna to bring or different than our last discussion? Go ahead, Jen.
Since Anna is not here, if people want to send their thoughts, I was going to say to the chair, but there could be change. If people want to send their thoughts to me singularly, then there's no discussion, there's no appearance of discussion, and I can forward them to Anna. So does that sound good for committee members?
Perfect.
Okay. Yeah, that sounds perfect to me.
Great, let's do that then.
Okay. Steve, did you have a comment?
I do. The regional school committee doesn't actually decide if the sixth grade goes to or when it goes to the middle school. The only thing the region decides as a whole is how much we're gonna charge them. And because they have to have their own principal and their own wing. So it really isn't a decision that the regional school committee makes.
Correct, and we had that discussion at our last meeting. This was just bringing, as Jen said, bringing concerns and putting those in writing, so we had those for Anna. Jeremy, go ahead.
Yeah, I think just to add on to that, like, we were just, the two concerns that were brought up at the last meeting were the idea of if we were to open the regional compact, what that would mean for us. And just generally how we as a committee felt about, you know, opening up the compact or, you know, discussing the sixth grade. And I just was curious, Jen, maybe you know, if we all send our our thoughts on it to you to give to Anna or to disseminate, that doesn't get around the open meeting law. That's not like a discussion. I mean, I know it's not a discussion, but it's not, that's not a problem, all of us sending in our opinions, right?
No, because you wouldn't CC any other committee member. So it would be directly communicating with the superintendent, which you can outside of a meeting, and then I can forward those to Anna. And when I forward them to Anna, I will say this is informational, not for discussion.
Great, thank you.
You are. So Anna, I see that you just joined, so I will bring you up to date. We are going to individually send our thoughts, pros, cons, concerns, what you will, about the sixth grade to Jen. We will do that individually, and then Jen will email those to you, Anna, so you will have that for the next Amherst School Committee meeting.
I don't go to the Amherst School Committee meeting. Are they discussing it at the regional school committee?
Regional school committee, yeah, yes.
Okay, I haven't noticed that on our agenda yet, so.
I think we were just, as of last, sorry. Meaning, as of last meeting, we were just trying to get out ahead of it. That was our discussion point from last meeting, and we put it on this meeting. And I think we were supposed to come with ideas to give to you, so we could just be out ahead of any discussion when it does occur.
Okay.
Was how we left it last, last meeting.
Yeah, nobody really wants to talk about it yet. There. I think Amherst needs to figure out themselves right now. I think that the feeling is that none of the towns are interested in sending their kids to the middle school in sixth grade yet. So if there's a strong feeling from Chutesbury otherwise, that would be very good to know. But right now, I think the plan is that Amherst is trying to work out a way to get Amherst kids to the middle school. And see if there's some kind of a regionalization agreement that could occur to allow them not to recreate the entire administrative structure for a separate sort of like sixth grade within the same building, but not part of the region. So that might come up. But if every, if the smaller towns decide that they do want to send their kids to the middle school, then everything changes.
Steve, did you have a comment?
I do, so I participated in two years, or maybe it was even three years, of these discussions at the region. And the two big things that come up for the three small towns, or their worries are if the sixth grade in Amherst will allow school choice of the three smaller towns into their sixth grade. And the other one was, are they, if they allow the sixth graders to participate in sports, that that may cause a drain on the three smaller towns too. But those were just the two big worries from the small towns in the discussions that I was part of. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
That's good to know.
Okay, all right, so we'll get our we'll email Jen individually, who will pass everything along to Anna, so we're out ahead of it and at least prepared. Our next item is we need a discussion and vote on one school committee member to be part of the principal search team. So Julie and I are not options. So do we have volunteers?
Do we have a sense of how often they're planning on meeting?
We would have initial interviews, and then we would have finalist interviews. So depending on how many candidates, I would say maybe three to five or four to six initial meetings. And then we would whittle it down to probably two or three finalists, so another round of meetings. And then if you wanted to participate in either the visit to Chutesbury Elementary or when we had the come meet the principal candidate. So not as extensive, I don't think, as the superintendent's search, but there is a time commitment. But we're really organized and super fun, so we would make it worth your while.
Oh, boy, okay. And then there, I'm just trying to think, like, in terms of timing to, when, when do they typically meet, do you know?
So that was part of my my, what am I trying to say? Think, Jen, that was part of my principal, my superintendent's report. But we are going to conduct interviews in May, the weeks of the 6th and the 13th. And then the week of the 20th, we'd select finalists and schedule visits. And they're going to be evening meetings. It wouldn't be during the day because of the commitment of staff, teaching staff and administrative staff. So they would be in the evenings.
Are they virtual?
I was thinking about in person. We could do the first round virtual, but it would definitely, I think, hopefully be in person for the finalist part.
Because I'm gonna be away a lot in May, that's why I'm asking. So I could do them remotely potentially if need be, but it would be tough, especially that first one. I'm away the whole first week of May. So for the sixth, I definitely wouldn't be able to be there in person. Something we could discuss, but if there's anybody else that's able to do it, that would be amazing, but I know everybody's spread so thin right now. It's a lot to ask. We also will have new people on after the 27th.
So our school committee meeting, your next school committee meeting is May 16th. And at that meeting on May 16th, unless there's enough notice and we do, you guys do another meeting prior. May 16th is too late to.
Another option could be to join at the finalist stage. I don't know if that's helpful or not.
Um, I, I can do it. I will, I will say I can do it. Unless anybody else wants to step forward. And I think I will then just be in touch with you personally, Jen, and we will iron it out. Well, I'll figure out.
That sounds good.
Thanks so much.
Well, thank you so much, and we will make it work with your schedule.
Anna, do you have a question? Anna, if you're speaking, you're on mute.
I wanted to say thank you, Jen, but then I also wanted to ask, is the new superintendent also involved in the interview process? Or is she coming in after the person is selected?
So I'm next after, and that's part of my principal, my, I don't want to be a principal, part of my superintendent's report. So if you hold on to that, and if I forget, you remind me. But I will, that's part of my report tonight, but thank you for bringing that up.
Sure. Okay, so do I have a motion to nominate Jen as the school committee member for the principal search team?
I'll nominate Jen as the representative for the principal search team.
Second.
All those in favor?
Martella?
Taylor, I.
Okay, Rose, I. Okay, next on the agenda is the negotiations subcommittee alternate member. I put this on the agenda because currently Jeremy and I are the negotiation subcommittee working with the Chutesbury teachers. My last day, according to race at town hall is May 9th. The way negotiations, not that they've been bad, it's just timing of the negotiations. I highly doubt it will be ironed out by May 9th. So that means that somebody needs to take my place on the subcommittee.
Even if it's just for a couple of weeks until somebody else can take it on, right? I mean, that's the reality of it, I guess.
Yes.
It doesn't have to be a long-term commitment. When we reorganize, somebody else could take it.
Yeah. So at this point, it's between Jen and Anna.
And Anna, right? I was gonna say rock, paper, scissors, Anna.
Oh, my goodness.
That's also, but that's also why I'm just saying, like, just to be, you know, to be optimistic about it. Hopefully, if you're, you know, overcommitted, then within a week or two of, you know, by May 16th, we should probably be able to find somebody else who could do that. Or lighten your load, one or the other, so.
You, do we know, so we're gonna elect a new committee member on the 27th?
Two.
Two.
Two. So theoretically, they could get sworn in and come to the May 16th meeting.
They should, they should be at that May 16th. Yeah.
So it may just be the, and then, so when's the next negotiating committee meeting?
April 22nd.
And then the one after that?
We do we have ones, we don't have one scheduled for after that.
I think that's, yeah, I think that's the last one we have scheduled. There might be another one that Bethany could attend before that last one.
So it seems possible.
I just don't want to leave.
A meeting before.
It's possible, but here's the other.
I'll, I'll take the
Yeah, sorry.
I'll do it until we have our next meeting.
Thank you, Anna. Thank you, thank you.
I think the, the thing that also, I think we've just realized is like, this last week's meeting, the union asked if we could meet at 4:00. And what happens is if we get squeezed out, it would be good to have, even just in general, like, going forward, it'd be good to have an alternate, so that we can kind of, like, if somebody can't attend, we don't have to cancel a meeting. That kind of stinks, because this is a slow process already, and not having an alternate is just gonna make it slower.
Okay, thank you, Anna. I am available and will continue on until May 9th. Just everybody of that. But do I have a nomination for, or a motion for Anna to be on the negotiations subcommittee alternate member for negotiations?
I move to nominate Anna as our alternate member for the subcommittee on negotiations.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Martella?
Taylor, I.
Rose, I.
My, you, I.
Heard, I.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just make one request?
Yep.
Can either Bethany or Jeremy email me a summary from the next meeting? And sort of like a overall summary of like where things stand, or so that I get, or, or just call me and talk to me?
Well, well, just, I think we can just send you, we can send you what's most current, which is our response to the union, and then you'll have an idea of where it all stands right now.
Excellent.
Okay, continuing on to reports, superintendent's report.
So I have created a superintendent transition planning guide for incoming Superintendent Cleveland, and it's an electronic compilation of many documents that will be helpful to her. These items include, but are not limited to, our district strategic plan, our roadmap for continuous improvement for student support services, the operational efficiency study from the Collins Center, our district curriculum accommodation plan, the draft of our new Union 28 staff handbook, and our recently submitted Student Opportunity Act Plan, which runs from 24 to 27. There's a link to school improvement plans for all schools, a school committee contact list, which will be updated as we go through town meetings, town administration contact lists as they get approved FY25 budgets, any grants that we currently have and are applying for, links to all of our bargaining contracts, principal contracts, central office staff contracts, all of our Union 28 policy manuals across all four districts, and the most important, the emergency information school closure protocol. I have met once and will continue to meet with incoming Superintendent Cleveland over the next few months, as we work towards a really smooth transition for Union 28. The other thing I know you're thinking about is the wah wah superintendent, principal search. So I sent out a while ago, the timeline. So we posted the job back on March 25th. The deadline for applications is April 30th. The first week of May, I'll be notifying the interview team members that they are part of the team and who else is on the team. And at that point, our confidentiality agreement goes out and is signed and returned. We will conduct interviews the weeks of May 6th and 13th. We will select the finalists May 20th through the 24th and schedule visits to Chutesbury Elementary School. And we should have the principal selected by the end of May. All dates are approximate and subject to change, but that's the basic timeline. I did reach out to the Seesaw Union President and mentioned that it would be helpful, and I would appreciate what staff is looking for in a principal, and any questions they might want to ask that we could put into the interview document. I will be resending an email to all staff again, just to reminder that we're looking for that. I'm also asking if you have any questions as school committee members regarding what we might want to ask the principal or what you are looking for. Please individually send them to me, and they can become part of our interview process. Shannon Cleveland, who is our new superintendent, has graciously agreed to be part of the process. I certainly will do all of the behind-the-scenes work. I will sit in as much as possible, but I feel that it is really Shannon who is going to be creating and working with this leadership team. So her input is much more important than mine. So she is going to make time in her busy schedule, and I think the evenings will work well for her to be part of that committee. And Kelly Sullivan, who's the principal of Swift River School, along with our wonderful Director of Finance and Operations, Caitlin Sheridan, have agreed to be the co-chairs of the search committee. Again, any work that I can do behind the scenes for them, I will do, but they will be co-chairing the search committee. So I am appreciative of Kelly Sullivan and Caitlin Sheridan for doing that. And this week, I received a resignation from our Director of Student Support Services. I did send an email out to the Joint Supervisory Committee members this afternoon. She is leaving June 30th, so at the end of her contract year. She is going over to Gil Montague. A Karina came with us, to us with a middle school, high school background, and this will be a pre-K through 12 position, so it gives her some growth opportunities. So I wish her the best. We are thankful for all of the work she did. She stepped in during COVID and jumped in with both feet, and she is efficient. She makes my lists look tiny and small and disorganized. She's really great at organization, so she's bringing that great skill set. We are creating a plan to find a new Director of Student Support Services. There are some options prior to a search that we are working on, but I will have an update for everyone soon, and definitely by the May Joint Supervisory Committee. And lastly, not that I'm counting, but I might only have 65 days left. And then I will be wearing my progressives and comfy clothes and slippers all day. And that's my report for tonight.
Well, hopefully the weather will warm up and it won't be slippers. You can do flip flops.
That's a much better.
Yes, yes, thank you. Okay, Caitlin, your report, and it looks like we have another vote to amend the budget because we voted to amend the Union 28 budget.
Yes, let me start with that, because sometimes I get going with other things, and then I forget that there was supposed to be a vote that happened. So let's start there. I can, let me just a second. Yes, Joint Supervisory Committee, they met a couple of weeks back to amend the Union 28 budget to adjust to match the salary amount for our new superintendent starting July 1st. This is an overall across the, the union decrease of $9,313. It would decrease Chutesbury's town assessment from 5.86% to 5.77% increase. I can show you how that budget looks, but there's only one line item change, and it just brings it down just a tiny little bit. So if we would like to amend the budget to match new superintendent salary, then you can vote to do so tonight.
Anna, do you have a question?
No, I was going to move to approve the amended budget.
Okay. All those in favor? All those in favor? Martell, I.
My, you.
Taylor, I.
Rose, I. Heard, I.
Okay, so I will get the, the new amended budget over to, to Becky and for, for town meeting, um, shortly. Uh, town meeting happens to the second thing, happens to be the same date as a Levert town meeting. Uh, we are kind of dividing up and I didn't see a time for Chutesberry. Is it nine AM? I looked on the town website, um, but, so.
Nine AM.
It is nine.
So they're same time, different places, um, but Jackie and I kind of figured it out how they'll be, um, one of us there. Um, Levert seems to, to go quicker, so I'm going to go to Levert first and stay through our article and then head over to Chutesberry after that. Um, and we should be able to, to cover enough, enough time that there'll, there'll be one of us there through the, through the town meeting.
Jackie, go ahead. Thank you. I'm just jumping in to piggyback with Caitlin right here. So, um, I let Bethany know this, but I'm going to let the rest of the committee know this. I cannot stay past noon due to a prior commitment and it's a real hard cutoff noon. Um, and even that's stretching it. So, um, I feel like the committee will want me to be there to be able to answer questions and such. But, um, I asked Becky what article we were in, we're Article thirteen, which seems really high, like we're not going to maybe be there. Like I have to leave like no matter what, even if we like just start Article thirteen at noon, like I will have to go. So I'm worried that if I'm not there and Caitlin's not there, obviously the committee's going to have to step up and talk about any questions. But what, what Becky, Becky forwarded an email to Paul, um, that's his name, right? And, um, and he said that somebody, if needed, could make a motion to on the floor to move up an article. So we can kind of play it by ear and see if it's going to be fine the way it is, but if it's like ten thirty, ten forty-five and we're on Article four, then someone's going to maybe need to make a motion to, to move up the article if you want me there. If you, if you feel like you can handle it, I'm fine with that. Uh, we don't need to move it up. But if you're, if you want me to be able to be there to support any discussion, then it, it needs to be, um, different. No, I think we'd love to have you there. I definitely want you there. Um, I, so on the morning of the twenty-seventh, I can't be there at nine. The earliest I can probably East Hampton, it's going to be like ten thirty.
I'll be there.
Okay.
I'll be there.
All right. So between Anna and Jeremy.
I'll be there too.
Registered voters, you can make the motion on the floor to move the article up.
I will so make that motion.
And then, and then Becky said something, we don't need to discuss it. Like I'm not, I'm not asking for a discussion on this. I just say that she also mentioned something that like there's something big going down with the regional.
Oh, yes.
And so I, I, and, and I know Anna might talk about this during her time. I'm not trying to bring up a discussion, but what I am going to say is I might have read the email wrong. I was, it was a little confusing. There's a chance that they might not even vote on this part or like, or school budget or school money or something. I, I think I'll just stop talking because I might be spreading wrong information. But there's something going down with the, with the regional thing that's going to make things tricky. And so she didn't, she would just, I think, wanted to let us know that.
Suzy, go ahead.
So there's, um, the Article two is how the assessment formula will be with the regional school. Because so much of the, um, numbers haven't been settled, what we are, the finance committee is hope, thinking, um, will pass over it. And, um, and it may turn out that we hold the meeting open at the end of the day and come back when all the numbers have settled from the other towns. Because the four town meeting is on April twentieth and the, and the warrant has to be published. So we don't, we can't fix it right now. Maybe enough information will come in by the twenty-seventh. Probably not. And so that article will simply be passed over and, um, hold the meeting open and it'll adjourn. If, the word isn't adjourned, it'll stay open. And then it'll have a meeting to settle that part.
So not, so not our budget, right? So not, so ours is not the issue.
No, and in fact, I think we'll be able to pass the article that's the budget, which was thirteen, but there's plenty of ways to move that up. It'll be the assessment, um, formula that won't be clear yet because the four towns all have to have some share.
I just didn't quite understand that part. Um, and I just wanted to just put that out there, but thank you and, uh, thank you for moving it up if you want my assistance.
We've got you.
Okay, so, um, other things to report, the end of your report, FY twenty-three end of year reports are getting audited through Markham. We've begun that process and so it's just been kind of a lot of dumping of, of reports and other documents with them so they can review and audit. And then we've already applied for a waiver for the next two years since we're a single school municipal district. We only have to get audited. At the end of year, reports only to audit once every three years. Um, so we've applied for a waiver for the next two, which is nice because it's not free to get audited. And, um, oh, I had the pleasure of attending a conversation with Inspector General Jeffrey Shapiro a couple of weeks back, put on the, by the town of Irving. There was representation from, uh, many local municipalities in Franklin County down to, uh, the Chief Procurement Officer in North Hampton. Um, Senator Joe Commerford and Representative Susanna Whipps were there and the conversation was about kind of the challenges with procurement and, and bidding in our, in our small rural areas. And it was really interesting because they talked a lot about, you know, not just, um, school procurement, but a lot of the town and the, the price of concrete and steel and all of the challenges that all of the municipalities are, are facing in our area. So it was really good opportunity. And finally, I just got an email about twenty minutes ago, half hour ago, uh, the, the, uh, House Ways and Means Committee has come out with their budget, uh, which is updated some of the, um, the Chapter seventy money, the school district doesn't see that money exactly, but it goes to the town. And it looks like there has been from the, the preliminary proposed governor's budget to the House Way and Means, it looks like there has been a bit of an increase, which should, you know, not a huge increase. We all got burned a little bit on Chapter seventy, but this looks like we, there's a little softer increase for the town for Chapter seventy money for next year. And that's my report.
Any questions? Are we? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, Jackie, principals report? Okay, um, so tomorrow, tomorrow we finish up ELA MCAS and a lot of your children took it. Um, and, uh, the, the teachers report that the students were like super awesome during this testing period, like really, really dedicated and tried their all and, um, they were all very, very impressed with them. So that was great. The third grade took it today for the first time and they do seem so little and, um, and Laura's daughter fell asleep, Laura's daughter, the Laura's in the office, fell asleep on a stack of papers on the, the office chairs. Uh, at the end of the day today, she just seemed so little, you know, um, and she was just exhausted from giving it her all. But, uh, uh, when I spoke to them all today at lunch, they told me that it wasn't as bad as they were thinking. So, um, as always is usually the case, and they also really like the amount of chocolate that they get throughout the, the testing time. Um, so our, because of the snow day, our last day for students is June eighteenth. And the last day for staff is June twentieth. Um, and so I'm just putting those dates out there. We will have a sixth grade graduation that I will let you know about the date for. Um, there's a sixth grade trip that happens and they're doing a special sixth grade ice cream parlor thing. And, um, we're having a, uh, full school musical, most likely on June sixth, that date we're trying to really hammer down, but we're pretty sure it's going to be June sixth. The auction is May third, which the PTO, especially Melissa Warwick spends an incredible, incredible amount of time on. And also it gets so much money. They have been funding a lot of our buses for our field trips this year because the, the, but the amount of money that a bus costs on a local field trip is astronomical. Um, and it is so valuable, the PTO support, um, on some of that transportation. Um, I already talked to you about town meeting and, okay, so the next part is a plea, a, a parting plea from me. Um, and I'm not, this is not me trying to like pat my own back, but I was, when I came here, I was the principal that got everything in motion for us to have a school mascot, as you know. So I had a student council that led the process of doing the moose and then we invented cocoa and then we invented the T-shirt logo and then we got everyone T-shirts. And that all happened in twenty fifteen, twenty fourteen, um, when I came on board. And what I really would love to do, and I usually come to you at the end of the year anyway, asking for this, but I, I especially want it this year. I, we usually try to get field day shirts or some kind of shirt for the school community, um, at the end of the year. And I would really like to do one again this year, particularly because it's my last year. It would feel really nice to give everyone another shirt that is in their size, um, currently and is really fun. Um, and the, the teachers wear them. I don't know if you've ever been to the building on a Friday, but the entire staff, entire staff wears the moose gear on Fridays and the kids wear their stuff constantly, constantly. The, the amount of tie dye shirts from last year that we, I, I mean, at least five a day, a kid has it on. They really wear them. Um, and like it's, we have a very healthy school culture around some of that and, um, it's really appreciated, I think, by the community as a whole, that everyone is able to have one and everyone has one that fits them, um, and feels part of the community. So I would like to ask the committee if I could use some school choice money. I want to say probably, I don't know if I have to give a number. Um, I work with Soundscape, who is, uh, the man who owns Soundscape is Brian, who lives on West Palm Road. Um, and, uh, he's great. Um, and I know everything costs more, so I used to be able to budget twelve to thirteen dollars a shirt and now I'm feeling like I need to budget eighteen dollars a shirt. Um, just to see, but I'm not sure. So I don't know if I have to give a money mark, but I would say up to three thousand dollars. It'll probably be less than that.
If you just say the up to part, I think that should be okay, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So my request is to be able to get moose mascot, T-shirts, probably for, with a field day focus for our entire school community up to three thousand dollars.
I move to approve.
Second. All those in favor? Martell, I.
Taylor, I.
My, you, I.
Heard, I.
Rose, I.
Awesome. Thank you though. So I will, that order form will go out soon to families. Um, so thank you really, thanks a lot. I think it'll be a really fun thing for the end of the year. I might even have them wear them for the musical. So I'm thinking about that too.
I think you should in indelible marker, sign everyone's shirt. So when they wear it, they think of Moose Man Dons.
Really sweet, something that's really, really sweet. That's been happening as kids have been asking me for my autograph. It's, it's like, I get like two or three a day. They see each other doing it. So then the next day, the the other one does it. So it's been pretty.
Do you want to budget for some headshots that you could get done and sign off? Like, because we could do that too. That would be perfect.
Oh my God, that would be so perfect. Wait, one more time, Jackie?
And that's the end of my report. That's perfect. Okay, um, next on the agenda is the Amorous Pelham Representatives Report.
Ah, so. Well, so the good news is, um, we are interviewing finalists for the superintendent. Um, we had our first interview on Wednesday. Um, so, um, Susan Gilson uh, was one of the finalists. She was also a finalist for the, um, middle school principal position. And so that was a little, I don't know, awkward maybe, but, um, she clearly has a preference for the superintendent job if offered. Um, so we'll just have to see how the other two candidates go. They're coming in the week after spring break. Um, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, I think. It's either Monday, Tuesday, it might be Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. Anyway, but they're coming in the next week. No, it's Wednesday, Thursday. Um, and then we're going to have deliberations on, I think, Monday. Um, we have a very, very full schedule of meetings. So we have um, interviews on Tuesday and Thursday, and we have, um, deliberations on Monday. We have a budget committee, a, a budget discussion on the, I want to say eighteenth to get ready for the four towns meeting on the twentieth. And then we have another budget meeting, I think, on the Wednesday in between the two meeting, two interviews to, um, fix whatever happens at town, four town meeting in the budget. And, um, then we are, you know, hoping to have language for the Chutesbury Town Meeting on the twenty-seventh to make sure that, uh, we can fix anything in the, or make small amendments to the warrant if possible, um, so that it could possibly be passed at town meeting if, depending on how dramatic the four town meeting goes. So we'll see. Um, as Jackie was hinting at, um, because the school committee voted to approve a budget that far exceeded what the four towns sort of had agreed on or not agreed on necessarily, but um, accepted that they could afford in the previous, um, four town meeting. Um, we now have to have another four town meeting to sort of figure out if that's possible and if not, like how, what we do instead. Um, and so that affects both the actual budget as well as the budget allocation. Um, or the allocation of the funding for this regional district. And so, um, we have to address both of them. Um, we also have a call, oh, sorry, Jeremy, do you have a question about budget?
Yeah. So I'm just want to make sure. So when we were at the last four town meeting and we all talked about the finances and the issues that we had with them and how much we could all afford, basically that's gone out and now we're being asked to like double the conservative amount that they were trying the first time. Is that right?
Double the increase.
Okay.
Not the amount, right? So we were.
Double the increase, right?
We were actually at like a, it's almost triple for Chutesberry because of we were at like two, what was it, Suzy? Two point five seven?
Yeah.
Um, increase. Um, every other town was at four percent guardrails. Um, so Chutesbury, just because of our lower, our, our decreasing population, I think it is. Um, no, just, uh, we just have a smaller contribution.
Our, ours, the smaller part is both population, but it's also EQV, the per capita, relative per capita income per towns. We have at least.
Per capita income per towns. We have the least wealthy town of the four.
So is it possible that we could see ourselves rising to that four percent number as well if we were to go with the new numbers?
If we, if we go with the new numbers, we will have to revise that to eight point two percent. Um, I think there's been a lot of, I mean, Suzie can probably talk to this too, but there's been a little bit of pushback. On the eight point two percent, um, so. It's a, it's a very large increase. I think everybody recognizes that. I think. You know, we're still trying to get together with Amherst College to discuss. Potential contributions to our budget and we realize that it's not necessarily a long term fix. Amherst has been apparently. Hesitant to commit to multi-year. Um. Uh, agreements, so uh, would just have to, the, the people who have. Volunteered to talk with Amherst haven't really been able to find time to meet together to plan um, how to approach. Amherst and so we're hoping to get that done as soon as possible. Um, and it would be nice if we could get it done. The problem is even if we meet with them, it's not like we're going to have a signed agreement. In time for four town meeting or in time for even Chutesbury Town Meeting probably, so.
Is there, can the other question I just have, is there a sense like this increase that we're being asked, the eight point two? I mean, this isn't a one time, I I've been trying to read the news and keep abreast of all of it, but like, it's not. This isn't probably gonna be a one time thing. I mean, this is not like a one year issue. This is probably something that's gonna go on longer, correct?
Suzie, do you want to respond or do you want me to?
Yeah, no, you could, uh, I have. Some information to put in from the this year's budget, but if you want to continue what you you're hearing at region.
Yeah, so. Doug is going to come to the four town meeting with a three year projection. So based on, so there's a couple of things at play. One of them is that. The recent um, contract negotiation with the APEA. Um, has obviously dramatically affected the budget, just simply because salary is such a huge portion of a school budget. Not just the regional school budget, but any school budget salary is just a huge portion of that. And so because that contract um, negotiation went the way it did. Um. That increased our cost, cost substantially.
How did that go? I'm sorry, I'm just.
It went on for over a year, as far as I understand, and the, you know. According to the negotiating committee members, you know, they, they very specifically said things like. You know, we don't have the money in the budget and if you insist on these concessions, then. You know, you know, you might get paid a little bit more, but you're probably gonna lose some teaching positions. And they still pushed for them and so I guess there was some awareness of. The consequences of pushing really hard for these increases, but at the end of the day, um, after. Months and months and months of negotiations, um, this is what happened, so. Now we have a budget that's about, I think it's like two. Is it only, it can't just be two million dollars more than. Last year. But it feels like it's two million dollars more than last year. I don't. I don't know if it was thirty four. Or may, so anyway, it's gone up considerably over last year, um, when we tried to make a. A, a, a four percent increased budget, um, that still meant cutting about one point. Seven million dollars out of the budget from a level services budget. Um, and that meant about fifteen teaching positions, uh, FTEs. Um, as well as cuts to cafeteria workers and um. Custodial services and central office staff and other things and so. Um, you know, it it meant destroying the world languages program. It meant cut. Uh, you know, severely affecting the music program. It meant, um. And this is I I incomprehensible to me. Taking the tiered, the tier two services down from twelve blocks to. Two blocks, which doesn't make any sense to me at all, like how you could. Do that to the kids who are like wavering between. Um, full inclusion and special ed and just destroy all of the services for them. Uh, it just wasn't um, palatable to anybody, um. And so the school committee uh, wanted to at least restore. The student facing, the most student facing, I I mean, I think we, there's a recognition that every. Every position interacts with students and every position is important for students. But that, you know, the teaching positions and the ones that are really direct. Directly in line with um, educational services for the students, we wanted to restore at least those. And so we voted to approve a budget that put about a million dollars back in the budget. I guess it was more like seven hundred thousand back in the budget. Uh, no, it was closer to a million, so um, that just kind of blew out the budget. Agreements that we had had at the four town meeting. Um. Sort of as a, a way to soften the blow, we took out all of the capital budget. Items that weren't safety concerns. Um, and saved another like three hundred thousand dollars. Um, so that the full, we still ended up cutting about a million dollars out of the level services budget. Um. But it was just, um. Sort of uh, ask, you know, it's just looking at what would happen. If we had to make all of those cuts was just so disastrous that we just couldn't stomach it and so we're really hoping. That the towns can dig deep and um, find some money. That. Oh, and so if we go forward with the eight point two increase to the budget from last year. That would reset the baseline for future budgets, so. We'd be working from a slightly higher position and so any increase in the budget going forward. Hopefully will be small, definitely smaller than eight point two percent. That's not to say that budgets won't increase. In the, in the future years, but hopefully not as much as this year. Whereas the other option was to fund the budget. As it was agreed on in the four town meeting with the four percent guardrails and then do like a one time increase to. Close the gap for just this year, but then what that, what that does is that just. Pushes the mess down the road another year, so that next year we're still gonna have this gigantic gap if we don't address some of the. The, the, or find some money and increase our income dramatically. It's, we're still gonna have that eight, eight point two or greater increase. In following years.
Can, can I ask one more follow up question? I'm sorry to keep belaboring this. I just really want to make sure I understand. Like, when I think about our budgets here in Chutesbury, from what I understand from my almost one year on the committee here. Like, I know Caitlin's done a really good job of making sure that we weren't spending like S R funds and funds that were not reliable in positions. Is that any part of what's been going on in Amherst as well, or is this really just a matter of like? Uh, you know, a perfect storm of things coming together and this new contract, or is this also just kind of poor planning throughout?
I think some of it is related to S R funding. Um, and I, I thank you Caitlin for being so careful with our S R funding, funding. And so as not to put us in that kind of a position. I think that like Chutesbury. Um, the district. Used S R funding to fund things that were supposed to be related to. Um, COVID, like. Adding additional counselors. Um, and then just because they're bigger, that has a bigger impact because there's just more of them. But I do think that some of the money got spent on. Reg, things that would generally be taken into the regular budget and so I don't know. I can't remember exactly how much of the budget is S R fundings, but I do think there's like a five hundred thousand dollar. And I, and I don't know exactly where all that five hundred thousand dollars had been used. But I think it's about five hundred dollars, five hundred thousand dollars of S R funding that we won't have next year. More budget questions? Caitlin and.
Thank you.
Um, yes, I would love to take credit for it, but Jackie has um, has a really good handle on the budget. Every year and so really she should. She's amazing and I'm gonna miss her.
So we'll need to add that into the list of things we need from the next principal, okay?
But also, um, chapter seventy with hit a many regional school districts hard. Um, because there was. Such a dependence on, we get this much of an increase every year and we're just not seeing it for next year. So I imagine that factored into a lot of the struggles, you know, for municipal districts like Chutesbury Elementary. Uh, we don't necessarily see the increase on the, the school level. Um, so it's not budgeted in, but the town has also has felt more of the um. The lack of increase in chapter seventy funds.
Suzie?
Um, so the finance committee has set up a budget. It's posted in the warrant. The warrant's gonna come out. Um, after a lot of discussion of how to target another number. That we would not only put in the budget, we would bring it to the four town meeting. We ended up with the rationale that Chutesbury's. Statutory assessment with a rolling five year average would be six percent. For the budget that's been proposed and so we voted to put in the six percent in our budget. Um, that's not eight point two and we don't expect necessarily the other towns will be able to do this. Because using that formula as we had agreed to in the last couple of years, after ten years of struggling to get it to a hundred percent statutory. Um, if we use that formula, Amherst would be at seven point three three percent increase. Leverett would be at twelve percent increase and Pelham would be at sixteen percent increase. So we don't imagine that that's all gonna work in that direction. But Chutesbury is committed to following the formula and putting in their six percent. Um, we will need some excess levy capacity, so our taxes will not only go up the two point five percent. Levy increase that's allowed, we'll also use some of. The levy capacity that we didn't use in previous years, but it's sitting there and it can be used. And that will be taking thirteen thousand out of there and all of that is to meet a seven million, two hundred and two thousand eight seventy eight. Budget, um, we are not have, we are not using, um. Cash reserves to do this. We are using some cash reserves to help meet the local budget. Because some of that budget will not continue forever because of special placement. Um, and we're using cash reserves for many other things, but when you read the paper right now. All towns that aren't benefiting from the student opportunity act are trying to figure out how to crack this nut. And some are planning to use cash reserves, which means that in the following year, they have a, a bigger hole to meet. Um, it's interesting to watch the paper and see sort of every town come to wrestle with these things and pick out a path. For them, but I feel proud of the finance committee for coming up with. The money to meet a six um, percent increase. It's like ninety three, ninety three thousand, I think. For us to meet that part, um, but we know that the four town meeting will probably end up. With some other plan, especially for Leverett and Pelham. And, and Amherst, I doubt that Amherst will go to seven point three three percent increase. So that is why having a four town meeting is so important and. We're hoping that this struggle, Chutesbury can survive. Using the hundred percent statutory with a five year rolling average formula, because it took a long time to get here. And we're trying to meet, we are going to meet it, but. Other towns may get ticked off about how the burden is falling on them. Because they have pretty different wealth factors than we do. And in that same picture, Chutesbury got the eighty six thousand for rural aid. But Leverett didn't get rural aid this time because their EQV has risen too high. So they not only didn't get that support, they lost the support they had. And it's a tough year all around, so. I'm happy that this committee was able to vote to support using the rural aid number. It made our final numbers. Um, easier to work with, um, our budget was passed five, well. Initially at the FinCon meeting, it was passed unanimously, but then when we came to. Approving the warrant, it got, the budget was passed five yes and two abstain. So we can tell that people politically are really anxious about this. Politically and fiscally are really anxious about this and. I have no idea what's gonna happen when the four towns get together. There is gonna be a caucus period. And um, I'm sort of feeling like since we've voted this budget, we should start sharing it with the other towns. So they're a little prepared for what the heck's gonna happen on the twentieth. Um, but I'm not the um, decider, so. Uh, I don't know what will happen as far as information, but you have the information now and I think. Um, I, I think there'll be support for this budget. It's. Like, kind of always, the FinCon worked hard to make it work and, and I believe that that's the best we can do right now and so how do we? How do we, we aren't, nobody, this plan will not reach the full budget that the. Um, school committee passed, because I know the other towns are not gonna go for those higher percentages.
So what I will say is that Leverett did, or the, I guess the finance committee. At least, um, passed the four percent budget. And then also passed a one time. Amount to reach the eight point two percent budget. So it, they did actually fully fund the eight point two budget. They just didn't fund it in the same way. And that's gonna also be slightly problematic because of the allocation method. Um, has to get approved, uh, my understanding is the allocation method has to be approved by all four towns. And the budget has to be approved by three of the four towns. And so, um, because they didn't do the allocation in the same way, that's gonna create. Issues for the approval process ultimately, so. Uh, but they, you know, they do seem to have some willingness to. Fund the budget, so we'll see.
But if they just chose to increase up to eight point two, but didn't follow that, what Suzie's talking about, that. Statutory hundred percent with the five year rolling average, then that's really not. They're not actually. Voting to fund their percentage, they're just gonna, they're voting to do a one time payment. Like as if it was split equally, yes?
No, they're, they're, they voted to approve the original four percent. Increase budget and then they voted to add to that amount in a one time payment. To meet the total amount of the budget that would have been allocated under the eight point two percent. The difference is that if they approved a budget for the eight point two percent increase. Then that amount is set as the new base for next year's allocations. And increases, so the four percent guardrails would go based on the eight point two percent increase of this year. And not the four percent increase of this year. So it's a little confusing, but does that make sense? So they're basically rejecting the base for next year.
Okay, because to see, I mean, what I heard, I just, I think where I'm confused and this is not why I'm not good at the budget stuff, but like. That Leverett would have to be, would be a twelve percent increase to get up to. To pay their share and I'm just wondering if that's what they've agreed to. And I'm just wondering if that's what they've agreed to for one year.
No, no, they've agreed to four percent going forward and up to the eight point two percent amount, but not eight point two percent. Just the total amount for one year. Not this 12%.
Okay.
And, and that was, you know, that's all before this upcoming four town meeting when everything could change again. So. Um, I think I'm going to ask, does, I know Steve, you're not really part of the committee, but I think we're allowing you to speak anyway.
Well, thank you. So I, Jeremy, I can give you a quick thing and then I'll get out of here. So you guys can keep going. What happened was three years ago, the school, regional school committee started talking about how this cliff was coming. And so was the former superintendent. But with the big turnover of the school committee and the turnover of the administration, that just left Doug as about the, the interim superintendent is the only one that was really aware of this coming. And yes, it was the S R funds that carried us last year, because last year would have been these cuts. But we were able to avoid those. And so here they are now.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Suzie?
And the other thing is Jeremy, this is not about, um, not being good with numbers. These four towns, this administration, these school committees and the regional school committee have never been here before. And these are, you can read across the valley, even with places that don't have administration turnovers or school committee turnovers, the whole damn valley is in flames right now. And so unfortunately, our process involves the four town meeting process. And we were trusting that to be the process. Now that it's been, that's been turned upside down. We don't know how it will go. And what's going to happen is four towns are going to come to it with different solutions. And on a good day, we could work it out. We could all figure out something, but it will definitely result. I believe it will definitely result in some cuts to the proposed, um, school committee budget.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Suzie. And I'm glad you're going to be there. And I just want to understand, like, I feel like especially with, I mean, I guess Bethany will be there too. And, but like, I feel like as we're heading out, I'm feeling this very, the sense of we're about to turn over on this school committee again, so that the majority of us have been spending, we've been here less than a year. And so knowing what I'm heading into on, like, understanding a little bit of this heading in to that four town meeting feels really important right now. So I appreciate all of that. Thank you, guys. I'm sorry to take so long of it.
Jen?
Thanks. Um, I am first of all, just wondering how badly do you need us there at the four town meeting? Suzie, or just in general, how much, um, do you need our representation? Cause I will clear my schedule if I have to, but.
I have to acknowledge, I actually am not going to be there, which is really hard for me. Um, but you have an amazing fi, finance committee. Everybody else will be there. And I believe that it's not so much representing a position, it's learning how this goes. And I feel like it's certainly understandable that people didn't know what the, what was going on. But the way you'll know is by going and you'll go and you'll feel like you're swimming in a pool that's way too deep and, and frothy. That's okay. You're not going to get it on the first time. This is my, I don't know what year in FinCon. And it's a process. We have a seven member team and I find that to be really good. But I think what happened is the two meetings, December and February 17th. It was too soon for the school committee members that were new to be there. And they didn't see how the process went. And, and that process can change. It's going to change. So here we go. We're all holding on hands here and, um, paddling.
I also think that part of the issue with the four towns meeting this year was that it hadn't been clearly laid out what cuts would be necessary. And I think, you know, there was a hint or a suggestion that there would be cuts and that would include some teaching positions. But that the actual teaching positions that were going to be cut were not named yet. And it wasn't until they specified which positions were going to get cut, that everybody took a step back and said, this is not acceptable. And so that really threw a huge wrench in all of the agreements that had already been made. And, you know, as a, as a newer school committee member, I think in, you know, moving forward, you can't go to a four town meeting, understanding that there's going to be cuts, but not knowing which cuts are going to be made. You have to have that information before you say, okay, yes, we're okay with taking this to four town meeting. Um, because I don't think, you know, the school committee approved or was ready for that particular budget, um, to go to four town meeting. I also just think that, you know, Doug's been double tasking his entire year. And, um, it, things took a little bit longer for him to get ready. Um, and you know, it's just like, there's been a confluence of storms that made this a really messy year as well.
Okay.
I have a couple more updates really fast.
Okay.
So we have also, um, a director of student services. Process, uh, we're hiring a new director of student services because Faye Brady is retiring. Um, and so we, um, interviewed, um, Doreen, uh, Reed, who's currently at the middle school for the position. And also, um, Matthew Holloway, I think this is public knowledge, right? The finalists? Yeah, they were, they, because they were meet and greet. So, um, for the position, and I think Doug should be making a decision on that relatively soon as well. And, uh, Debbie Westmoreland is also retiring this year. She's the assistant to Doug or to the superintendent, um, and the director of communications. And so I'm sure that they will be filling that position shortly as well. I think that's it.
Okay. Yeah, it's plenty. Yeah. Okay. Next on the agenda is the union 28 report. We don't have anything to report. We haven't met. Well, we did meet, but it was to, um, approve the new budget with the adjusted superintendent line item. Um, Jeremy, do you have anything for CES report?
I mean, I'll say something. I'm always kind of curious what I'm doing down there. Um, so there's not a lot of stuff that necessarily relates to us directly. So I'll just give you the two things that seemed kind of interesting to me. One was that there was a civic summit that was held that I meant to go to and didn't get a chance to about whether or not to keep or remove the MCAS. Uh, that was reported on as a, remove the MCAS as a graduation requirement, I should say. Um, it was really great that it seems like there was a good representation of people kind of making arguments for both sides of that. Um, it wasn't kind of homogenous, which I really would have loved to have been a part of. Um, but it's the first and what will probably be a bunch, uh, more sort of meetings like that. And they also talked about their summer programs. Uh, they have a couple of programs that they're running, um, with the Mount Tom summer program and the Beacon summer program. And they're not necessarily credit recovery, but the students who are in those programs, which I think is Greenfield and Holyoke. Um, they want to keep working through the summer and the administrations of the local area schools are in support of that. So they're going to continue those programs through the summer. And I think at least with Mount Tom, that's a, um, that's a new thing. And then I sent you guys all out the newsletter and, uh, reports. So you can delve more deeply into it if you wish, but those are the two top things I saw.
Perfect. Thank you. Jen?
Sorry, uh, just a couple of quick things. One is just so you know where Amherst is at prior to any budget changes. Uh, they just cut the school play which Amethyst was supposed to be a part of with the drama club. Um, and made it, it's going to be over the louds, that loudspeaker for the students rather than being a play. So all the kids that have been doing tech all this time aren't really going to have jobs anymore. It's all insane happening.
Was that due to bu, was that due to budget? What was, what was that due to?
That's what the drama teacher evidently said is that it's due to budgets that they weren't able to make it happen. Um, it's all insane all the time in Amherst right now. Um, but the other thing I just wanted to let everybody know is that I have joined that rural, um, school committee that just formed. They put out an email to us about they really needed members to join. Um, so I'll be part of that. If you want reports on that, I'm happy to add that into the agenda for next year.
Right. Perfect. Um, next on the agenda, so this is, um, policy review. These are just first readings on, um, several policies. Again, it's first reading. So we don't have, we're not taking a vote tonight. But if anybody has questions or edits that they want to discuss in any of the policies now would be the time. Okay. I will take that as a no. Um, we do not have to go into executive session. Our next negotiations meeting is the 22nd, so we will go from there. Moving on to future business, I'll just list out the meeting. So has, as everybody has said, we have the four town meeting on April 20th. I believe that is in person. It is not a remote meeting. So just keep that in mind.
That's correct.
Yes. Town meeting is the 27th. We've got our people in place to push the warrant up on the agenda if needed. Then on May 16th, that is our next school committee meeting. Um, it does have a policy committee meeting listed for May 16th, but you're not going to have a policy committee.
But we just did many, many policies. So.
We did.
So I think we'll cancel the May policy. And then by the May meeting, we'll have our people in place and then June can be a policy meeting unless people think we've done A okay. So let's cancel May for now.
Okay.
Can I make a suggestion for just the supplement material for the next meeting? So that before the May 16th meeting, I, I feel like there's a description of all the subcommittees. And I would suggest that that be part of the prep materials before the meeting so that the new members can at least like, I don't know, review what the subcommittees are and.
I will make a note to send, to let Pam know, we want the reorganization list of subcommittees um, as soon as possible prior to the.
Yeah, I know Pam provided that last June when we did the reorganization. So it definitely exists.
And that kind of like, I'm, I always have the question too, like what committees does the chair have to be part of versus, right? Cause there's certain ones the chair has to be part of.
Thank you, Jeremy. Budget and personnel and joint supervisory. I thought, or joint supervisory at least, I know off the top of my, you think I'd know after.
Oh, sorry. If we could just include in there to, um, like general meeting schedule, how often they meet? Just so that they have an idea of what, what it's going to look like.
I think that's a great idea, but I also think that was a total lie this year for Union 28. It just was. It just was.
I was told the school committee only met once a month.
Be honest. Just be actually honest. If there's a search.
Then no one would join. No one would join any of those committees.
Okay. So school committee, May 16th, you'll have your reorganization. And then joint supervisory, the next meeting is May 20th. So that'll be, have some reorganization too, because you'll need new people on joint supervisory.
So I'm going to interrupt the chair and say, thank you so much to Bethany and Julie. Thank you for being part of my policy committee. We're super organized and efficient. And I have so liked being on the committee with the two of you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
And on behalf of the school based team, you two are a dream. And not only are you parents with kids in the school, which is really helpful to have on this committee. You're just like really awesome humans and can see a bigger perspective. And so, um, I, I really, like, like I said before, I really feel like the principal can only do the job well if they're given the autonomy and support they need. And that is very much the case. So thank you.
We will miss you all, but we will not necessarily miss these meetings.
I don't know how we're going to do it without you guys, but we will figure it out, I guess.
And if you ever need us to rally the troops though, to come to any sort of public support kind of meetings, you do contact us and we will rally our, you know, parents from our class years and things. So.
Yeah.
For the first few meetings, you guys will still be here in the background though, right? Like you'll just be down on the bottom and we can call on you as we need.
I don't think we're allowed to comment unless we can comment on the public, the public hearing.
Steve, come on, you guys can do it. Please.
It's like phone a friend.
No.
Be here silent. You can call on us.
Yes. Yes. No, you will be wonderful. You will be wonderful.
This has been one of the most pleasant school committees to work for. I'm really truly going to miss you both.
Well, I guess I'm going to miss all of you. But.
Beth and I, Beth and I did joke about how we're going to have to have like a coffee night or a bar night in replacement of these school meetings. Yeah, yeah, you can come too.
I can come. Yeah.
There was talk of treehouse. If anybody's up for that.
Don't make it the school committee meeting night. Any other night.
I, I suppose, yes, it is that time. Okay. So we will, do I have a motion to adjourn at eight 32?
Oh, you just sang good night.
I second that, but oh, I am going to miss all of you so much. I can't believe this is like the last meeting with this crew. This is so.
Again, we'll be around this pond all summer. It's fine.
Well, good night all and thank.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.